Thank you colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. Can I welcome you to the meeting of the Planning Committee of today, the twenty second of October? And before we start, I will just read out a little bit of an introduction, which I'm beginning to learn to know by heart. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to meeting the Gravesham Borough Council's Planning Committee. I intend to go through some housekeeping rules. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube and recorded. The recordings will be uploaded to YouTube within two working days, where it can be accessed by anyone and everyone. Members, please use the microphones in front of you when talking and ensure that you turn your microphone off once you've finished speaking. A number of members or officer will not be able to speak if your microphone is still on. Please note that the council's visual equipment may, on some occasions, focus on or near the public gallery. Therefore, those in attendance at this meeting may be filmed or recorded. Attendance at this meeting signifies your agreement to this. If, as a member of the public, you do not wish to be filmed or recorded, please inform a council staff member in attendance, and we will try to assist where reasonably possible. On hearing the fire alarm, we ask all attendees to immediately evacuate the building. Please evacuate by the nearest fire exits and make your way to Community Square outside the main reception doors. So we'll now move on, if we can, to the agenda. Item two, apologies for absence.
We've received apologies from councillors Peter Scolard, Samir Jassel and Aaron Elliott. Councillors Deborah Croxton, Derek Ashenden and Gary Harding are attending as their substitutes.
Thank you. Sign the minutes of the previous meeting which I have in front of me, which is a meeting on Wednesday, the twenty fourth of September. Can I sign those minutes? Thank you. I will now sign them. Declarations of interest. Declare any interest members may have in the items contained on this agenda. When declaring an interest, a member must state what their interest is. Any declared interests will fall into one of the following categories, which I don't think I need to read. Any declarations of interest? No. Thank you. That then brings us on to item five, to consider whether any items in part A of the agenda should be considered in private or items in part B in public. I have no reason to move anybody or any item. There's only one item anyway. Which has brings us on to item six, which is planning application for determination by the committee. There's one application today, which is Cobham House Vineyard. Now, before I start this, I would like to ask the legal expert representative to give us an instruction to exactly what we are seeking to determine tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just stand up just because I'm aware that some members on this side of the chamber can't see me. And so, good evening, members. Just in respect of this application, this isn't a normal planning application. Now, as you're aware, in a normal planning application, you would look at a wide range of planning policies and you'd consider whether or not it met with the council's development framework. That isn't the position here because what we have is something called permitted development, and that is governed by the General Permitted Development Order, which sets out how these applications are dealt with and what it is that local planning authority can take into account. And so in respect of this matter, what can be taken into account is the citing, design and external appearance of the proposed development. The proposed, the, um, it's already permitted development. We've already accepted that principle, so we can't go behind that principle. So say what you can determine is citing, design and external appearance. As part of a previous application, the LPA decided that this needed prior approval and further information was sought in respect of landscaping, noise assessment and a preliminary ecological appraisal. And it's committee's job this evening to look at all of that information and to decide whether or not it's happy with the citing, design and external appearance only. Thank you, members.
Thank you. Members of the committee, any points of clarification from a legal representative? I see none. Oh, sorry. Counselor Ashenden.
Thank you, Chair. Have I understood right that we, because I'm substitute, right, so I don't normally do, we can only talk about what it looks like? Or is that, is that your assessment?
There we go. Yes. It's where it's cited, so that will be where it is in the, in the area. It's the design, how it looks and its external appearance. Yes. That is correct.
Back.
And nothing else?
You can look at the other parts that planning, that the local planning authority asked for, so the noise assessment, the landscaping and the preliminary ecological appraisal. What will happen is the planning officers are going to give a presentation in a moment, which will hopefully give you more of that detail that you're looking for. But just in terms of the legal test, the general permitted development order only allows us to consider those items. That might hopefully become clearer once we've had the planning report.
I've seen councillor Harding. Did, um, anybody else wanting to talk? No. Councillor Harding, ask any questions or?
No, thank you very much, Eton. I was gonna ask the same question about the environmental impact, whether that it included, but actually with the noise assessment and so on, which is rather strange for someone who's a bit deaf. But this is something I was gonna ask the same question.
Right, thank you. Any other points of clarification or information? Quiet. Right, thank you. We'll now move on. If I can explain how we're going to proceed with this. We will have an introduction by one of the council officers on the presentation. We will then, I will then invite members of the committee to ask again for points of information or clarification. When that's been discussed, if there's any other councillors who would like points of information or clarification, I will invite them to speak. At the end of that point, we will then move to sport. I think we have one speaker in support of the application and we have three against. So what will happen is the speaker in support of the application will make their presentation. Again, the points of information clarification, but not necessarily debate, will then take place from members of the committee and other councillors. And then those three speakers who are against the application will also have the opportunity to speak. You'll be guided by the lights which are in front of me, and there will be three minutes. And when the light turns to amber, you will have one minute left. When it turns to red, you will have to stop. Thank you. Hopefully they'll become fairly clear. So, we will now move on to the planning that we can see in front of us. Land at Cobham House Vineyard, Gold Street, Cobham, Gravesend. Planning Officer Ethan, do you want to introduce us?
Thank you, Chair. This application relates to details for the erection of a winery building and hard standing. Reference two oh two four zero five four four at Cobham House Vineyard, Gold Street. The applicant originally submitted a prior approval application under Schedule Two, Part Six, Class A of the General Permitted Development Order. This allows development consisting of the erection of a building on an agricultural unit of five or more hectares, which is reasonably necessary for the purposes of agriculture. The local planning authority determined that the development is reasonably necessary and permitted development in accordance with class eight point one of part six of the order. Part six, class A requires a developer, before beginning the development, to apply to the local planning authority for determination as to whether prior approval is required for the citing, design and external appearance of the building. This was assessed in detail in two oh two four zero five four four delegated report, which members have seen attached to appendix two. This slide shows the wider site as outlined in red, with the approximate location of the building shown in the green circle. The winery building is to be located on the western portion of the site, to the south of residential properties on Gold Street. This slide shows a satellite image of the site, also outlined in red. It shows the site and its agricultural use with planted vines in an agricultural setting. As seen in the planning history, a number of applications have been submitted for an agricultural building on this site. The two thousand and twenty four zero three seven five application suggested an alternative location shown on the slide, which was refused on citing, design and external appearance grounds. For context, the site is planted with vines and the eastern side was planted approximately three and a half years ago and is now producing wine. The western part, the western field was planted in approximately June twenty twenty three. This slide shows, this photograph is taken on Gold Street and shows a hedgerow on the site boundary. This slide shows some site photographs from within the site. As shown, the site is planted with vines and trellises. The photo in the top right-hand corner would be where the building is located, with a tree line forming the site boundary to neighbouring properties. This slide shows the proposed site layout plan and the winery building. These are the proposed elevations of the winery building. As you can see, the main openings are located on the southern, eastern and western elevations, and there'll be V-Lux windows on the northern and southern roof slopes. The external facing materials are shown on this slide. These include a black metal roof, black rainwater goods and black timber cladding. This slide shows the proposed floor plans with a basement level, ground floor and mezzanine level. The local planning authority determined that prior approval was required for the two thousand and twenty four zero five four four application and that details relate, additional details relating to the citing, design and external appearance were to be submitted. These related to landscaping and noise impact assessment and a preliminary ecological appraisal. Members are requested to consider these matters and the wider site in design and external appearance of the building set out in the committee reports pack and by our legal officer. The first detail request relates to landscaping. Members can see full details of the landscape in informative in paragraph five eleven of the committee report. This slide shows the proposed planting of a woodland belt to the north, a buffer of trees and shrubs to the south of the building and an additional, an additional hedgerow and tree planting on the western boundary. There are also biodiversity enhancements proposed through bird, owl and bat boxes, loggaries and hybernaculas. The image on this slide shows a hard standing around the building, which equates to approximately two hundred and seventy nine square metres. The local planning authority do not consider this excessive for an agricultural use. The wider landscape management plan includes implementation timescales, aftercare and maintenance and details of any means of enclosure. KCC Ecology reviewed the proposal and raised no objections. Overall, the proposed landscaping details satisfy the requirements of the informative. Together with the earlier information provided, sufficient detail has been given for members to conclude in terms of landscape and visual impact that the citing, design and external appearance of the building are acceptable. The second detail request relates to a noise impact assessment. Members can find full details of the noise impact assessment again at paragraph five eleven of the committee report. The noise impact assessment took measurements from a similar sized wine making facility, which tested the bottling machine, press and compressor and a pump. It found that noise levels did not exceed the seventy five decibels as set out in the original noise impact assessment. The noise impact assessment submitted has been reviewed by Gravesham's environmental protection officers, who raised no objection and confirmed that the variations would not be audibly detected as louder. The operational vehicle movements are not considered to have any detrimental impact on amenity due to the small scale operation of the site. Overall, the noise impact assessment provides sufficient detail in context with the earlier submitted information to conclude that the citing, design and external appearance of the building are acceptable in terms of noise. The third detail request is related to a preliminary ecological appraisal. Members can find full details of this again in paragraph five eleven of the committee report. The appraisal demonstrates the low, demonstrates low biodiversity value of habitats impacted by the development, sets out precautionary working measurements that are to be implemented. KCC Ecology have reviewed the appraisal and raised no objection. Therefore, the appraisal satisfies the informative and provides sufficient information for members to conclude that the citing, design and external appearance of the building is acceptable in terms of ecology and biodiversity. To conclude, the recommendation to planning committee is to delegate to the head of planning to grant prior approval, subject to the imposition of conditions, including those set out in Schedule Two, Part Six, Class Eight Point Two of the General Permitted Development Order. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ethan. Suzanne, would you like to add anything further to this?
Thank you, Chair. I believe the legal officer and the case officer have dealt with any points that I needed to make. Thank you.
Right. Members of the committee, any points of clarification or information? Frank, I've seen you, Ben Les and then Gary.
Thank you, Chair. Just a point of clarification really. You're saying this is an agricultural building. In actual fact, it's a manufacturing building. They're manufacturing wine.
Hello, councillor. It's established in case law that, that wine making is agricultural use. I appreciate you may not agree with that, but that is the position in case law.
Frank, do you want to come back?
Yeah. What makes this different from a brewery? What makes it different from a distillery? They're all manufacturing plants. What makes it different from Ken Oggs or Nestle that are using farm products to produce your cereals?
And councillor, I think you're making a general point, which you'll probably bring out at the end. I don't know whether we can give sufficient clarification other than the fact that in case law.
I think that's the key point. This point has been addressed, as the legal officers pointed out, in case law. And what is being proposed in terms of the winery and vineyards has been considered to be an agricultural use. Therefore, as Laura pointed out at the start of the meeting, we're not here to consider whether or not the principle of this falling within the General Permitted Development Order and this particular part and class is something that's up for consideration. You're considering the elements that have been pointed out in the presentation only. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Les and Ben, Gary and then Derek.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just want some clarification on the noise assessment that was made. That it was done, could you give me some more information on how it was done and how did you, was it assessed?
Thank you Chair. So the noise impact assessment was requested for the details application and the measurements were taken from a similar sized wine making facility, which included the bottling. Let me go back to that slide, apologies. Bottling machine, press and compressor and a pump and the measurements were taken from that and it corresponded with the findings in the original noise impact assessment of the noise not exceeding the seventy five decibel limit. Our environmental protection officers reviewed both noise impact assessments and found that it was acceptable and raised no objection.
Thank you Gary.
Thank you Chair. Could you keep that on there? We did from the, the notes on here, make a comparison with a like for like machine elsewhere, which I think is a fair point because there's nothing there. So you'd need to go somewhere else to make your assessment of measurement. I can understand that. However, it's done on there due to the time of the year, the process of bottling was not taking place, which means you were testing the machine of which there were no bottles of being used. And I, from my experience, I've been to a bodily plant in the seventies, I was a young man and, well, let's go to show my age, thank you very much. And it was a milk bottle plant where we had grass milk at the top, grass bottles. And the noise was tremendous because the cracking of noise. So I would really like a clearer statement from here. I would like to see what was the actual noise produced while the machine would actually use bottles, not an empty bottom plant. Therefore, then I can make a better judgement. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I just wanted to point out that the, the acoustics report that addresses the noise element on its last page basically takes into account the fact that they've. Sorry, so in terms of the wood acoustics report, they've made some allowances for what the, what the noise levels would be as a result of bottling in terms of the, the assessment. So that is taken into account, but obviously they weren't able to measure it on site at that particular point because it wasn't being done. However, I think the other thing to point out in terms of this, in terms of this application, sorry. Okay, so in terms of this application, what the applicant is proposing in terms of this application is to bring a containerized bottling plant in for the period that bottling takes place. That will be within the facility as well, so that for a one to two week period. So the reality is the noise levels from the bottling element won't be as significant as you're actually thinking, but it'll, it'll be for a one to two period, a week period in a container situated within the building, therefore its impact will be less.
If you would come back Gary.
Thank you Chair. I mean, it's very easy to say it's only for a one or two week period, but because the sheer volume we're talking about of constant noise and I'm still not very happy with the, the actual clean, clear assessment. You've said what, would, could, should. I don't want to hear that. I would, I like to be definite because it is very clean and clear and we need to know the absolute event. Where the, the noise assessment and I need to be in black and white here, but thank you very much.
I think councillor Harding from your, the comment that you made at the start of this, there is no facility there. So that in black and white terms, there's nothing that anyone can measure. They can only go and measure something that's akin to this and make assumptions around what the overall noise impacts would be. Now, we've liaised with EP colleagues and Ethan provides some additional information. They've reviewed the assessment and considered the impacts and the advice, their professional advice is that is within acceptable limits. Thank you.
Chair, can I also quickly jump in? Within the original submission as well, you can see on page sixty one of the main committee report pack that the bottling period per annum would be twenty, sixty one, yes, would be twenty hours per animal less.
Right, thank you. I've seen Derek, then I've seen Debs and then Les. Derek.
Thank you Chair. As I understand it from legal, this building has been decided it's agricultural because it's making wine, it's bottling up wine. So I take it that this plant can only bottle wine. It cannot enter into what's known in the industry as contract bottling. Because this plant is only going to run for two weeks a year. But it's well known that smaller vineyards and other companies that produce products look for somewhere to bottle their produce. But if this is agricultural, then it can only bottle wine and nothing else. Is that correct?
Shazad.
Thank you Chair. So the proposal is to address the grapes and the production from the agricultural unit. And the only thing that will be bottled is the production from the agricultural unit for that one or two week period. There will be no bottling plant on site in any case to cater for any wider demand. And if, if, if there was even the assumption by the applicant that that's something that they wanted to consider in future, they would need to submit a planning application for that. It couldn't be done under this prior approval process.
Thank you Derek.
So just for clarity, this application is for this and making that wine on that site and nothing else?
Correct.
Debs.
Thank you Chair. My question actually pertains to the plantings that are going to be put around the actual facility. Will this be a mixture of mature and young planting? So the mature will be an immediate buffer and then the, the younger plants would have chance to come through and grow. Thank you.
Thank you. So what the applicant proposing is a mix of native trees and shrubs that will form mature cops with a wide variety of microclimates and ultimately an even mix of age, height and density. It doesn't specify at this stage that there will be mature trees all the way across the north, but is recognised that they will ensure that there's a mature tree cops to the north so that it's extended and protected to provide a greater buffer. So there is an acknowledgement within the landscape report that there, that will be done in terms of making sure the element there is more mature and provides better buffer than the remainder of the site.
Thank you. I've seen Les, then Lyn.
Thank you Chair. Just getting back to the noise assessment. The answer you gave to councillor Harding was that, in my opinion, is that it's not a true assessment of the noise that's going to be made on that site. It's just an assumption of the noise.
Thank you Chair. So my comment was around the fact that because there is no facility there or an identical facility, you can't make, you can't model the same thing through actual, through an actual assessment. So there always is a degree of assumption in noise assessments based on industry practice and modelling. And that's effectively what's been done and that's the norm with any noise assessment. You can't, unless something is in situ that you're going to actually go and monitor for a period of time. It's never a case that you can say this is the actual noise that's being generated. You always will have to go and utilise something that's similar, but it's not always identical. So there's a degree of assumptions that are made that, you know, in a comparable facility, which is effectively what the applicant is doing, saying in a comparable facility, this is the degree of noise made, we made some assumptions around the bottling, but it's still within the limits. Our EP officers have reviewed that information and they agree with that, that basis. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Lyn.
Thank you Chair. Can I ask just clarification on something that councillor Coxton said about the trees? It's got their proposed bat boxes and bird boxes now. What is the proposal length of time? When will they actually be erected that's going to be put in there please?
Sorry Chair, I'll need to look at the details, but they would be, they would need to be delivered in accordance with the PEA, which is the document that we refer to, but if you don't mind, I'll just have a quick look and get back to you on that. Thank you.
Right, I'm looking to see if any other councillors want to ask for point clarification or anything. No. Councillor Milner, would you be happy if this answer is given to you a little later?
Yes, certainly Chair, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will now move on, if we can, to those people, public speakers for the application. We have one, Celia, can find difficulty with your surname, but if you'd like to come forward to the microphone.
Good evening everybody. My name is Selena Cahoon, so that's, you're not alone in having difficulty in pronouncing it. I'm a barrister and I've been representing the applicant in terms of this series of applications. I'm not a planning consultant, I have a planning consultant with me. There may be issues that you, that you wish to ask me that might need some input from, from Mr McKeown, but I will do my very best to assist you with any questions. Firstly, thank you very much. Within the time limit that I've got, I'm not going to wither on. I'm going to confirm, excuse me, that my learned friend in her assessment of your job today as looking at permitted development rights is, is a limited one. That doesn't prevent you from looking at, at the issues that you have raised. But in particular, what you have before you in the appendix is a very robust, very thorough and very fair assessment of all the issues that were raised, that we were aware of from objectors and the conclusions that were reached, as I say, I think are robust and fair and can be relied upon. What you have in this application is a, quite a, you know, quite a lot of expert evidence, both from the applicant and from objectors, but also from your own experts who have looked at the noise and have looked at the landscape evidence and indeed the sighting. So that the, the, the reports that you have before you carry out, in, in my view, a highly thorough and effective exercise. And I can only commend the way that this has been addressed. It, it goes through in, in extraordinary detail. And it is correct that it is unusual perhaps for this committee to see this type of decision. There is nothing wrong with that, but you certainly have quite a lot of advice in terms of how you're supposed to approach that. I know that my time is running out. The, the last thing I wanted to say was that my client's extremely grateful to have this opportunity to present to you. And he, he has gone above and beyond in addressing the concerns that have been raised throughout this process. So we've not stinted on trying to address some of the concerns raised. Those are my submissions and if there are any questions, I'm very happy to help.
Thank you. Members of the committee, any questions? I've seen Gary.
I apologise, I won't try to pronounce your surname, I do apologise. You spoke of a, that you have right next to you a robust document with all the expert details and so on. But the thing is, what I've been hearing so far is would, should, could assumptions. Nothing real detail. And this is what I'm having a lot of problem with is what you're coming up with me is confidence of representing your client and what we're hearing is, well, if it worked with somewhere else, another winery, but we didn't have the.
Gary, Gary.
I'm asking a question. I would like you to fill out the detail what was missing, especially regarding about the noise of the bottles. Do you have that sort of detail with you? Because you've just said that you've got robust details on you and I want you to fill in the blanks that what I've been hearing from here. Thank you.
So as, as I understand it, the, have you, all the councillors would have had an opportunity to read through the reports and I'm imagining Mr Harding, councillor Harding has had that opportunity too. And you've also had an opportunity to look at the application and documents themselves. And lastly, you've also had an op, I'm not quite sure, you've had an opportunity to look at each of those expert assessments. So I, I'm not sure what it is that you, that I can provide more. I'm not, I'm not quite sure what it is that, that is being expected. In terms of the noise impact assessment that was carried out, I understand that concerns are expressed about the fact that, that the way that the methodology was applied, which is, was accepted by your own environmental protection officer. The way that the methodology was applied meant that you couldn't find or didn't use a, 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 a system that was working at the time. But nevertheless, if you look at the report, councillor Harding, it confirms that the, sorry, let me just find the right page of the report. Yes.
Thank you. We can only have one on at a time, apologies. I, I don't think that the speaker should be going through the report and pointing out all of the points. If there are points that come up about the report, that can be dealt with in the debate, but I don't think that's something the speaker can address here because the speaker's merely taking us to points that are in the report that is before us.
I think I'm inclined to, well, I do agree with that. I think it's probably an unfair, a little bit of an unfair question for a legal representative.
That's all right. I, I don't want to be unhelpful councillor Harding, but if you look at page twelve of the report, it sets out the conclusions on, on, on what was carried out and why that sound.
Thank you. I'm looking for any further questions. I've seen Derek and then Lesley.
Thank you. On page thirty seven, on one of the objectors, it says no EIA screening was initiated. Environment impact, impact assessment screening. Why was that?
Derek, can I come in on this one? Well, I'll ask legal.
Yeah, it's not for the applicant to deal with that. Again, that's something we can deal with in the debate because there is an EIA screening that's dealt with as part of this application. You will hopefully have seen that. I think it's at Appendix Five. Shazad will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's at Appendix Five and there is an EIA screening opinion here. I think what you're referring to is a previous application where there may not have been one, but there certainly is one for this application.
I think we're muddling up two applications here. Les.
Thank you Chair. I just want to get some clarification on the vehicle movement that will be. It says there is a significant number of heavy goods vehicles will be delivering and taking away waste and supplying equipment and bottles picking up, stuff like that. Can you give me some idea of what movement of vehicles we're looking at?
Not off the top of my head councillor. What page were you looking at?
Let's come through one of the objectors.
Councillor, can we stick to? Councillor, can we stick to registered speaker? I think we're straying into a general debate at the end.
I do apologize, Chair.
No, that's no problem. No problem. I understand. Right, I'm asking again. Um, we're, um, do you want to?
Thank you. Um, were you quoting from the committee report there, councillor, or is that, uh, some additional information that somebody else has provided you?
I won't ask you provided you that information, but if it isn't information that's been provided as part of this committee, you can't take that into account as part of your decision this evening. Thank you.
But what I can add, however, is that highways matters, even though they weren't strictly relevant, were considered and that's set out in the delegated report.
Thank you. I'm now looking around to see if there's any further points of information or clarification. I can't see them, so thank you very much for coming along.
Thank you.
And if we can just come back, Shazad is going to answer Lyn's question.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just to answer your query about when the bird boxes, et cetera, would be, um, put inside, that's during the construction period. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So we will now move to the speakers against the application, and first one is Tom Swift. If you'd like to come forward, again, same arrangements apply. Thank you.
I am Tom Swift of Transport Dynamics. I have over twenty years' experience as a transport consultant. We do not usually object to development schemes on behalf of local residents, but only do so where we see significant issues. There have been three recent and similar schemes at this site, all being refused by this council or quashed by the High Court. But when this scheme was submitted, no detailed information on access and traffic was provided. Given a site history, wouldn't a credible application seek to provide the best content from the start? I can tell you, providing as much information as possible, not just for local people, but also planning officers and you as members, should always be the default and transparent approach. Here, it can be seen that this is not the case. But why? Because scant information exists, crucial questions cannot be answered. As members, you cannot answer the following: how much traffic will the site generate and how will it be accessed? How will heavy goods vehicles reach the site? How will they turn? How will the understated sixty thousand glass bottles be delivered and then dispatched? Significant detail, significant details are missing from this submission because it is favorable for the applicant to remain silent. This prevents a balanced and robust decision being made based on the facts. Once it is established, this proposal will not operate in isolation. It will be seen and it will be heard. There will be serious negative impacts and it will be damaging to the local highway network. Gold Street is a very narrow highway with few passing places. It is, after all, already signed as unsuitable for HGVs. An intensive new traffic use at this location simply does not work. During processing, bottling, storage and sale, significant supplies and staff movements will occur. The winery will require an office function, HR, logistics, marketing, sales, accounts. All are generating traffic, and that is before the dispatch of the product. No one here can know the projected traffic movements because they have not been provided. Once established, it is a natural progression for this enterprise to once open to the public, resulting in significant additional traffic. It will be possible for smaller scale producers to transport their harvest for processing here. This will further increase traffic. All details relating to access and traffic have been admitted from this proposal. This situation is convenient for the applicant.
News are, um, stop at this point. Thank you. Colleagues, once again, any questions, points of clarification? I see none. Thank you very much. Can I now move to second speaker against the application is Steve Dyer, Chairman of Cobham Parish Council. Be guided by the lights. Whenever you start speaking, it'll turn green.
Okay. Good evening, Chair and members. I'm parish councillor for this area. I know these lanes. Let me be plain. This application is a sham. There are three issues. Access isn't safe or proven. This is an orphan site. It's never had independent access. Locally, it was reached via the opposite field gate, not from Gold Street. Gold Street is a one-lane road with one real passing bay. The rest are private driveways. When councillor Larkin visited, he had to reverse over a hundred metres for a lorry coming the other way. Beyond the gate, vehicles must cross one hundred and twenty metres of public footpath linking Cobham to Meppam, busy with walkers. In short, turning and conflict are not solved. Uh, point two is the wrong place. It's hilltop vanity and not need. On our site visit, the applicant said the view was the draw and not the operations. That's putting a factory on the skyline because it looks nice. The ridge is in full view of Soul Street, Meppam and five public footpaths. It's the wrong building in the wrong place. Uh, point three, the impacts are hidden. You can see why. The trialling of the bottling rig with the line being dry, so it was a load test without the load and the additional noise, put bottles on and it becomes an industrial level plant noise. By Y and GB's yardstick, this is classified as very large. Sixty thousand bottles a year would be collected by couriers from online sales using lanes already under strain. Waste output could reach one point five million litres per year. That's up to eighty-four tanker loads or a hundred and sixty-eight HGV movements on a one-lane road with one passing bay. On the chemical side, there's nothing on storage, handling or routing past homes or the footpath. Uh, and on the ecology side, there is a note saying no water bodies, but there is a large pond beside the site with a bridge with videos of bats, badgers and newts within thirty metres of that. Process side, there is no environmental impact assessment in a national landscape. That is astonishing. Please remember that Meppam Valley Vineyard was refused after full planning, and that isn't in an area of outstanding natural beauty. This hides behind permitted development to dodge the same scrutiny. Please remember that Ludsdown has just two roads, one already burdened by Silverhand, the largest miner in England, and this would strangle the other. Don't forget that if you prove this, you are saying that buildings with a major industrial impact can pop up on any twenty-eight acre field in an area of outstanding natural beauty. We do see this as a sham. Please refuse this on the basis it needs a full environmental impact assessment so that every hidden impact is tested in daylight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking around for any questions, points of clarification or information. Um, Frank.
I don't know if this is the right time to say this, Chair, but, uh, the traffic and transport consultant and yourself talking about Gold Lane. I live in Meppam, so I know what the roads are like down there. None of you have even mentioned the streets to get to Gold Lane. I e the street in Cobham. What way is the transport going to come?
But just looking for clarification, are we considering highways issues in this?
No, the highways issues aren't something that be, that can be considered. This is permitted development and you can only consider the issues I've raised.
I'm, I'm sorry, colleagues. We have to be guided by the law insofar as this is a quasi-judicial body. Um, so we can have an explanation on that point. Frank, do you want to carry on? No, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, Miss Dyer. Thank you for your comments. Ben brings us on to Dr Ruben Minas. And again, you understand the procedure. As soon as you start, start speaking, the green light will come on. And then when red light comes on, you must stop. Thank you very much.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dr Minhas. I'm a resident of Ludsdown. Also the managing partner of medical practice here in Grozend where I took over from, uh, Dr Vasu, who's very much missed. And I wanted to touch on some of the potential health impacts of winery wastewater. Winery wastewater is the major by-product of wine making. It's high in volatile organic compounds. And I've done some research and I've looked into the effects of this because there's no mention of what's going to happen to any of this winery wastewater. And it's associated with a number of problems. These include eye, nose and throat problems, respiratory problems, including worsening of asthma, headaches, migraines, balance problems, dizziness and lack of coordination. According to Public Health England, volatile organic compounds have long-term cancer risks, including acute lymphoid leukaemia, acute mildoid leukaemia, non-Hodgkin's lymphoma and aplastic pneumonia. There is no plan at all for what's going to happen to this wastewater. And this could potentially produce half a million to a million litres of wastewater. You have no idea how much this is going to produce. I think that's a very significant concern. I think it's a reasonable concern for people to have. And I think it's a reasonable level of detail for you to require the applicant to supply. Now, the reason why you don't have that detail is because it throws light on the volume of production and what's really going to be happening here in terms of its operational scale. There are a lot of things missing with this application. Uh, the kind of things that are missing, there was a speed survey that was done when the road was closed. You can imagine what the result would be. There are no places for vehicles to pass cars, pedestrians and horse riders other than one single location. All the others are in private ownership. There's no safe access to the site because it's previously accessed from the field gate opposite before it was sold off. This is an orphan site. This is why I think you've been misdirected by your legal officer, because access to the site is an integral part of sighting. Yeah, you cannot ignore that. There is also no impact of the true traffic levels in the landscape. To get from the access, even if you could get into it, you would have to run a hundred and twenty metres up the hill on an unmade road to the top of the hill, crossing the major public right of way that links the village of Cobham with the village of Meppam. Once you get there, any vehicles have no parking and no turning on the site. There are also no genuine figures of wine production. The applicant stated around fifty-eight thousand bottles. There's no basis for that figure given at all. It's purely a number that's printed on a piece of paper. According to Y and GB, Y and GB, the actual production could be a hundred and fifty thousand bottles. There are also no bottles in the bottling line. If there were, actual government figures tell you that the level will be ten times louder. It will be ten decibels louder. Health and Safety Executive quote figures of eighty-five to ninety-five.
Thank you very much. Once again, I'm looking around at members of committee for any points of clarification or information. Right, uh, Lyn and Ben Debs.
Um, thank you, Chair. I listened with intent with what you were saying. Um, could you just clarify me what you meant by a private ownership? Um, you, you said that there was drawing and you said, and the other ones are owned by, by this private ownership. Could you just explain that, please?
Certainly. The, um, Gold Street is a very, very narrow lane. And the majority of the so-called passing places on there are actually the entrances to people's properties. There is one single passing place on there, uh, which is about halfway down. And it's about a hundred and twenty metres from that point to the bottom of the road, which is the next passing opportunity, which is actually in public ownership. And the other one is a hundred and twenty metres the other way. So unless you accept that private residents should give up the entrances of their property to allow vehicles to pass to enable this application to be feasible, then I'm afraid that it doesn't actually, it doesn't have a proven access to it via Gold Street, which is why it was previously accessed via the field opposite. The farmer Scripps used to own both the fields and he would access the small field from the big one from across the way because the Gold Street access was too narrow. So this has now created a problem, which is why it's been concealed from you. Um, and that's why you've heard very little about it.
Thank you. Um, Debs.
Thank you, Chair. And you mentioned a number of medical statistics about possible carcinogens and things like that. That's taken from information that you've, you've gained, I assume, from your, your, uh, profession. However, surely this is being produced in an open air agricultural site. It's not within a factory building or an enclosed site. So surely, um, this is an assumption that these could be issues, but not an actual fact. Thank you.
So my response to that would be you actually have no basis for determining where, how much waste will be produced. There is no figure here at all, and you have no basis for assuring the public where any of this waste is going to go, how it's going to be disposed of, um, and whether it speaks to any of your points at all. Because you have no basis to make any assumption up one way or the other. So I'm not stating any particular method of disposal because no method of disposal has actually been, uh, documented.
No, thank you for that. But, um, surely within agricultural, and this is not turning into a debate, but just in response to that, again, you're assuming that there's going to be X amount of waste from this particular production. Other agricultural sites also have waste products too. So that's, you're, you're again making assumptions. Thank you.
Again, I don't think that's a question, can I say with greatest respect? Any other questions or comments? No, thank you. So. Right, we'll move on now. Before we start to consider the, um, recommendation, I'd like to invite first of all Ward councillor, whether he would want to say something. Of course. Point out that you have five minutes and again be guided by the lights.
So, um, Chair and members, thank you for giving this opportunity to speak as the Ward councillor. Um, I've got three simple questions. Can you even get into the site safely? Does it need to be on the top of the hill in full view of the downs? And do we actually know what entails or have the impacts been hidden from us? Firstly, access, as pointed out earlier, this is an orphan site. It's never had an independent access. The only approach is Gold Street, and I reckon what you've heard, a single track lane with only one true passing place. The other passing places are residents' driveways. When cabinet Larkin met a lorry there, he had to reverse all the way back. This is not safe. It is in fact very dangerous. We don't even know if vehicles can swing safely into this gate. Historically, the access was only from the opposite field gate. Our own GBC waste vehicles were filmed emergency break-in to avoid a cyclist at this entrance. The traffic report done while the road was closed. This isn't evidence. This is a farce. How can you do a traffic modelling when the actual road is closed? And are you surprised? Well, Casey C then had the girls describe this view as informal based on very little evidence. So members, this gives the application very little weight because you can't make a true study of the road if the actual road is closed. And beyond the gate, every vehicle must, as echoed before, must crawl a hundred and twenty metres along a shared public right of way used daily by walkers. So again, safety of those that were using the road itself. Secondly, sighting on the hill, why at the top of the hill? Secondly, siting on the hill, why at the top of the hill in full view of Soul Street, Meppam and five footpaths? Why not by the railway line where the impact is far less? The applicant admitted to the parish council he wanted the view. This is not agricultural again. This is vanity of the siting of this application. At the expense of our national landscape, it's like building a nightclub in a cathedral tower because you like the skyline. The Kent Downs National Unit warned that this is mostly wine making, not vineyard use. The application's report placed down the impact and in landscape, even small changes matter most. Residents produced a visual assessment and this council obviously has already been reminded of what has gone before. Thirdly, what does this really entail? This is where the description is clearest. A bottling test was done with no bottles on the line. Why? Because with bottles, noise jumps from 70 decibel to about 95 decibel at industrial levels. No bottles were on the line because bottles make noise. It's like testing a school fire alarm with the batteries out. It's measuring M25 traffic noise after you close the motorway. The scale, as we've said before, the UK leading wine experts said 150,000 bottles a year, about five Everests in glass. That's 40% of 60,000 bottles would go by courier, like DPD. None of that traffic is assessed. At very least, that's half a dozen transit van loads every week. The logistics, bottles don't disappear by magic. They're hauled by an unmade field, by a 40-tonne articulated lorry with no hard surface. Operationally, this means off-road movements that aren't for safety or management, aren't assessed for safety or management. What about waste, as we've said before? There's nothing credible planned, yet the plant would create 1.5 million litres a year. That's up to 84 tankers loads, up to 168 HGV movements on a single-track lane with not one real passing place. Again, as Steve said earlier, what about chemicals? Nothing on storage, handling or routine or treatment of chemicals, past homes and out of public right-of-way. Again, nothing. What about ecology? The death studies, no water bodies, yet residents filmed, I've seen badgers, bats and a pond of newts 30 metres away from the site. Again, nothing reliable. And the process is still, there really has not been a sufficient environmental impact assessment. And again, this precedent, and I've said this previously in applications that I've spoken about, this sets a policy. Just over the hill, Meppam Valley Vineyard, essentially the same proposition was refused after full planning scrutiny of these issues. And it wasn't even in the area of outstanding natural beauty. So again, with the, it says an emphasis again with Meppam Vineyard sounds as a local present for proper scrutiny by the industrial yard set. This scheme is very large and not shed, not a farm shed, an industrial plant and has therefore not had the proper planning scrutiny that this requires. It is on the same level as Meppam Vineyard. If we wave this through, we set a precedent that a mixed-use industrial facility can pop up in any 20-acre field in Gracium. And remember, Ludsdown has only two roads. One sits Silverhand, the largest winer in Britain. And the other now is targeted by this proposals. And our residents feel as heavily squeezed as grapes in a wine press from both sides, yeah? So let's return to the test. Has it got safe access? No. Does it need to be on the hill? No. Does it need to be properly understood? No. Indeed, it's context, scale and setting. This is major development. It's not permitted development. Counselor, to this. So I would urge the planning committee to refuse this and send it to full planning for proper scrutiny so we can have a proper assessment of this application. It's not safe, it's not small and it's dishonest and it's not permitted development. So I would urge you as a committee tonight to refuse this application. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. I think the lights weren't working. You had significantly longer, but not to worry. It's saying informative. Right. Do you want to come in on a couple of points there?
Thank you, Chair. Just to clarify, Meppam Vineyard was a full application, so the planning considerations there were entirely different. So the two can't be considered in the same context. As the legal officer pointed out and as the case officer's pointed out, you're considering a prior approval application. Therefore, you're limited in terms of what you can consider. As set out in the committee report, in supplementary report and the accompanying appendix, this development isn't Schedule One or Schedule Two development in terms of the EIA regulations. Therefore, the council can't request an EIA assessment from the applicant. As such, the application is before you to consider in its current context. And the final point related to wanting a full planning application, it's not within the council's gift to refuse an application just because it would have been more ideal to have a full planning application. You have to consider the application before you, in the context that is before you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Now, any other councillor who's not a member of committee wish to speak? No. That then means we'll move on to consideration of recommendation. Can I just ask the legal expert again to just tell us what we are considering in terms of grant prior approval?
Yes. So in respect of this, as has already been established, this falls within the general permitted development order. What Schedule Two of that order says is that the erection, extension or alteration of a building is permitted development. And so when you're determining that, you're determining the siting design and external appearance of the building. It is the building alone. It is not the access road. It is not the highways impacts. It is the building itself. This application is for a building for agricultural use and that is what can be determined. So it's only the building itself that you are looking at, looking at where that building is sited, i.e. whereabouts in the parcel of land it has been placed, the external appearance and the design of that building. And as I say, the local planning authority already asked for more information, which you have in front of you, which is the noise assessment, which relates to the building, the ecological assessment and the landscaping.
So in effect, it's not a plan application. We are looking at the question of prior approval and looking at building its location and whatever. Right, I'm looking to members of the committee. Would anybody like to pass comment? I've got nothing. Right. Would somebody then like to propose we move to determination? Thank you. Is that seconded? So we've had a proposal and seconded, but we now move for the recommendation which you see in front of you, which is to delegate the application to the head of planning to grant prior approval, subject to the imposition of conditions, and you can read the rest yourself. Right, I will move to a vote. Those in favour of that recommendation, please indicate. And those against the proposal?
That's four.
So we'd like to tell us?
Yep. So that's the application approved, five to four. Thank you.
We now move on very swiftly for fairly obvious reasons. But I will wait until people move if they wish to. Right, thank you, colleagues. If I can then move on to item seven, reports for information, there are none. Item eight, plan applications determined under delegated powers. But as a copy has been placed in the library. Any other business which buries the special circumstances. I have no any other business. There's no reason to exclude anybody, because they've gone anyway. Which leaves us on to items likely to consider in private, none. And therefore, can I thank you colleagues for once again coming along and giving us your wisdom and commitment once again. I wish you a pleasant evening.